Good morning. I call to order the September 25th, 2018, meeting of the Slayne County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vigerson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here. I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government on items that are not on today's agenda and usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission? Seeing then, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for September 18th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of September 18th, 2018 as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the county commission minutes of September 18th, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number three.
RFA 187-18 bid award for project 18-5372 aggregate shoulder construction with Darren Fishel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Good morning Darren.
Good morning commissioners. We're here to discuss and take appropriate action on a Slayne County Roden Bridge Department request to award a contract for furnishing all tools, equipment, and labor required to provide aggregate shoulder construction. This work is to be done at locations designated in this request for action. A little history is that many of the asphalt roads in Slayne County have little or no shoulder. Many years ago, the county saw a need to correct this deficiency with an aggregate edge wedge. This provides a measure of safety for a vehicle that may inadvertently leave the roadway, allowing the driver to correct without oversteering. In many cases, results in accidents. Since the program's inception in 2015, we have completed approximately 60% of the asphalt roads. Sealed bids for project number 18-5372 aggregate shoulder construction was opened on September 18th at four o'clock. The roads to receive the aggregate shoulder construction are those designated. Kip Road from Magna Nolia Road to south to K4 Highway, Old Forty east from the side at Salina City Limits to Simpson Road. No project will... Project shall be completed by December 21st and no work shall be conducted during the time of harvest. Five contractors were extended an invitation to bid. A-PAC Shears of Salina, Frank Construction of Salina, Bettis Asphalt and Construction, Topeka, TNR Dirt Salina, and Malm Construction of Winsburg. One bid was received and that was from A-PAC Kansas Shears Division and it was for $159,961.60. The county completed a similar project in March of 2017. Using these numbers and adjusting for an anticipated increase in construction costs, the above proposal is in line with county estimates. The county engineer will typically provide an engineer's estimate for this project and engineer's estimate was not provided. The bids were reviewed by the Roden Bridge Department, engineering division, staff, and all calculations were verified. A, we can accept the bids as indicated in the staff recommendation. B, reject bids and rebid, or C, provide other options. Staff recommends awarding a contract for project number 18-5372 aggregate shoulder construction to A-PAC Kansas Incorporated Shears Division for $159,961.60. Award of this contract will also establish the unit prices should the county have sufficient funds and elect to have additional work performed such as an edge wedge or shouldering for other roads. Account 11030, the edge wedge, aggregate edge wedge in the Roden Bridge Department has an unencumbered balance of $300,000. The original budgeted amount was $300,000. If approved, the remaining balance would be $140,038. I do have a few slides just to kind of let the audience know and the commissioners give you a little bit of update on the progress of our... of this project. This is what I call an aggregate edge wedge. It just provides the chance for somebody to, if they do leave the roadway, to get back on the road without that drop off. Some roads in our county, you're able to get this nice two or three foot you're looking at. Some roads because of them being narrow, you're only looking at a foot and a half. And so we try to provide that protection, especially on the newly overlaid asphalt where there are two or three inch drop. And this just shows some of the narrow right of ways that we have and it also provides some contrast to drivers at night. You get the black asphalt and then you got the white stripe and then the white rock. So it kind of helps a little bit that way. And if you kind of know what you're looking for, where the grass doesn't grow up in this rock, that's where people are using the shoulder or actually going off the road. This is a map of what we have completed. The blue outline there shows what we've done with the county forces. The green outline shows what we have contracted out. So that's 74 miles that we've gone up to date. We identified about 150 total miles that needed this upgrade. These are the roads that we're proposing with this contract, which would be Old Forty from the Salina City Limits to Simpson Road. And then Kip Road actually is an extension of last year's where we ran out of dollars and we want to finish that project. This is what's left. If you look at countywide, that what we haven't done. So we've got about 72 miles to complete. We're about 60% through this process. I figured when we started, it would take about 10 years. We are currently doing the easy stuff is what I call it. You know, some of the other ones will take more of a dirt contract type of activities other than just some aggregate. Does it have any questions?
Well Darren, I'm looking at the five contractors were extended an invitation to bid. Does that mean that we didn't post this for bidding? We only invited five people to bid?
You know, I think they put it out on the website and sent it to these.
That is correct. We post all these available to any contractor so that can bid. We just have a list of normal contractors that bid on our projects and these were the ones we sent them out to.
But it was posted?
Yes.
And, okay, that's my concern because when you only get one person that comes back and bids and according to this, the way I read it anyway, that it says an invitation to bid was only extended to five people. That's a much broader...
It was written a little misleading.
Okay.
That was my mistake. It was extended, it was open to any contractor.
Very good. I will say that I've heard more positive comments on the edge wedge road, you know, flatten out there. As I have any positive comments for the Roden Bridge Department in the two years that I've been on the commission, so it is a positive. So other...
I do expect to extend this because there are dollars left because we added some pavement late like Waterwell and Ohio Street. And so I'm going to be talking with the contractor to get some of those done also.
Okay. Are there other questions or comments from the commissioners for Darren?
I have a couple. Darren, with only one bid coming in, looking at the unit prices, how does that compare to the last?
Last year on the unit price, it was a little over $30 a ton.
Okay.
So a 10% increase.
And I've noticed that driving around that the edge wedge is really nice, but when you get into a real hilly area, it seems to wash out some and you got some voids.
And that's the maintenance portion of it. You know, once you put it down over time, then we have to go back and freshen it up. But yes, you're correct. Sometimes where it's really steep, it does wash away quicker.
Further questions? I'll ask for public comment at this time.
I'm noticing the type of material you got alongside the road. Darren, are you locked into one type of material or do you open the bids up to any type of material in the state of Kansas? Because what I'm saying is poor quality material. There's other material, but other materials are going to cost more.
Right.
So that was my concern.
We spec an AS1 or AB3. Now, the contractors have come back and asked if they could provide a different material. But some of those materials which were crushed concrete, rap which is recycled asphalt, they don't have near the wear or the... they just don't last as long.
Okay. What about availability of material in the state? Are we running out of material?
In the western portions, yes.
That's... I've heard that. Some of these quarries are going to close.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing then, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid of project number 18-5372 to A-PAC Shears in the amount of $159,961.60 as requested by staff.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, I... It's been moved and seconded that we award RFA 187-18 for project 18-5372 to A-PAC Shears in the amount of $159,961.60. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you Darren.
Good luck.
We'll move on to item number four.
RFA 185-18, the Dane Hansen Grant Application with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning Annie.
Hi. This is Dane Hansen application, grant application. It's my first Dane Hansen application. We don't typically fall into their expectations in the criminal justice field. But luckily, the criminal justice field is expanding and we're doing a lot more preventative and a lot more reflective work with the youth and the adults. And so we now are able to apply for this. This is one of those grants where Community Corrections is applying. Commissioners need to approve and those dollars will be released to Community Corrections and then we will pay for services at the school, USD 305. So I want to make it clear that the dollars will be released to us, we'll track the hours they are. We are not supplanting, so the hours that are worked will be outside of traditional work hours of the staff. And the staff member is here, Sarah Lancaster, if you have questions for her too. So I want to just be clear about that. It's a small grant, $28,500. And the whole purpose is to reduce youth being placed outside the school for misconduct, suspensions, long-term failures to report. The goal is to address the misconduct with restorative practices and those are all evidence-based practices. They've been around for years and lots of evidence shows that those things are very effective. And so those practices are built into the school day and as every child receives those practices, as misconduct would occur, then mediation and other activities can occur. And that's where the heart of the grant is. So the grant is for a number of mediations and they have several staff that we paid for in a past grant that are trained to be facility-trained mediators. And then the other dollars is to administer the outcomes and the monitoring of the grant and that is to Sarah Lancaster. That way the Community Corrections, we can't be in the school 24/7 obviously, but our youth are impacted with the help of the school and Sarah Lancaster reporting the outcome. So it's a win-win for everybody. It wasn't a difficult grant, so it was easy to do and collaboration happens a lot with Community Corrections and many community partners. And so if you read the grant, there are two support letters from myself, Community Corrections, and the school. The school is fully engaged in this grant and want to partner with Community Corrections. We had a previous one that was a federal grant, but those dollars are not being released this year due to the federal government regulations with those dollars. It just comes and goes with federal grants, you never know. So we're seeking approval to submit the Dane Hansen today, it's due, but it's all electronically for $28,500, mostly for mediation and monitoring of the grant total to equal out to that. And we're asking the commission to approve so we can submit that.
I am not opposed to the county accepting free money.
I'm not ever... That's how Community Corrections is living, on free money. So I'm never opposed.
I get it. I understand it.
Yes.
That's a good job. And $28,000, while not a great big dollar amount in terms of the big picture of the county, is still a significant amount of money and from my way of thinking, we need to accept this grant.
Thank you.
So that having been said, I'll let the other commissioners ask questions or make comments if they wish.
Annie, is this... you talked about USD 305, are is this the only school district in the county that will you help with this here?
Currently. The goal is, this is a three-year grant. And so the goal is that get... are going with this at 305 and that is the middle schools and into the high schools. And then we would hope to venture out to Ottawa County. I'm a 28th district agency. So my goal would to venture out to Ottawa County and look at other schools. The... The problem is, it's a small amount of money and we haven't even talked to those other schools yet. So we're starting small here, but I think...
Okay. My question was, is that the other school districts here in Slayne County?
Right.
I'm not worried about going to other counties.
You should because we're the 28th district.
I know, I know, but I'm just...
Right.
First off, Slayne County, I mean, are you...
Right. You're talking about southeast and El Saline and all that.
Right.
This does not go there yet.
Okay.
But we are welcome to...
Got you.
And we put in there a piece about extending that possibilities and going talking to the principals. I don't know if anybody even does this in... I mean, this is pretty new to provide this practice inside the school districts. And Sarah's a real collaborator, but also pushes these efforts and is trained significantly throughout her efforts in these practices. And so the goal would be that, yes, we could expand. We would have to write a larger grant and cover some more work and that would be more work on Sarah's part, but we certainly are well open to that.
Okay.
You're bringing up an interesting point there Annie, to me, that you just hit on and that is you're representing the 28th district. Are we the only commissioners that vote on the 28th district?
You are. What happens is on our larger grants that, not in reference to this because we're only touching Salina here, but on our larger grants that we do impact Ottawa County, I do go and get their votes. But on these kind of grants that are smaller and they only impact Salina, we only need the commission. And you are the host district. So when we are combined with Slayne and Ottawa County, you are the responsible party to make those decisions.
A couple of questions Annie.
Uh huh.
You said that this was a three-year grant?
It is.
Is the $28,000 spread over the three years?
It is.
And is this a standalone grant or is it a matching grant?
It's just a standalone. There's no match requirements. We'll just submit their regular month or... there might be quarterly reports, I don't remember right now, but the regular reports go in to show the outcomes and the successes and those kind of things. And then should they award us this, we'll just do that over a three-year cycle.
All right. I might ask questions of Ms. Lancaster.
She's welcome to come up here.
Or you can answer, I'm not sure. And who are you employed by?
USD 305.
305, okay. Takes care of that one. Is there any public comment regarding this? Bring it back to the commission then for more further comments or possible action questions?
Mr. Chairman, with no more comments, I move we submit the restorative practices to reduce incidence of misconduct and school removal grant to the Dane G. Hansen Foundation.
Second to motion. Further comments? It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 185-18 for the Dane Hansen Grant Application. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you very much.
And I just want to be clear, this is an electronic grant, so our signatures don't count. So we're going to say that you approved it and put your name, Commissioner Vigerson, as the winning... the winning number in the bingo contest today.
Lottery.
Okay?
All right.
Yeah. Just so you know that.
This is one that I proudly would say okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item number five.
RFA 182-18, Community Corrections General IT Contract with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning.
Annie again.
This is a little bit of a repeat. We were here and it was us that we returned and we did rewrite the request for action a little bit differently. I just want to, I guess some of you were here, I think Commissioner Shadwick was not. But the goal is to maintain even services. We opted not to go with our past contractor for a few reasons. And we're opting, we put it out for bid and asked Slayne County IT, Technol Consulting, and Studio F. And we're recommending that Studio F get the contract to provide services to our agency for $4,800 a year. The other one, Slayne County, had a $5,000 bid for an annual and the Technol, I think I'm saying that right, is $8,100. So I mean, obviously, it's a slight lower than Slayne County, it's not a significant amount. But what makes this good is that the provider, he owns his own business. He used to be with our old contractor many years ago, but left and then had a no compete agreement. And so now he can compete and he's put a bid in. And one is, we've worked with him for years, so he knows our systems. We have multiple state systems that you have to understand and know and you have to be able to communicate with IT and Topeka at different agencies. It's not just one, it's multiple agencies. And so that is already there, there's not a learning curve there, he has that. Also, he's familiar with our computers. We purchased most of those through those systems and he's been working on them previously. So that is already there. So the learning curve and the knowledge and the ability to be there is critical to us. We've expanded, we've become a larger agency over the years and to be able to have access to someone fairly quickly would be important. We go down, nothing gets done and DOC counts the number of days you don't put things into the data system and after two days, you start getting dinged, which means you lose money. So if you aren't putting those chronological reports on the clients and updating the system on a daily basis, I get an email from them that says so-and-so's been two days out, we need to get that data in. So they watch it very closely. And so if we would go down, that would also be, we would need immediate assistance. And so our concern, because I know there was a question between Slayne County and the Studio F, we don't have a problem with Slayne County, love those people and they've been very positive for us and worked with us over the long haul for different county issues. But I think that my concern was, one, the learning curve, they would have to learn and that could take some time. But also, I think there's three of them, they're working the entire county. And the sheriff's office is large and there are other large agencies in the county. And I just felt like we may not get as quick as access to them as we would need to address our concerns. So that's why I'm proposing that go with Studio F at the 4,800 annual cost and ask your approval and to sign the contract.
One of the concerns that I had last week, as I did cast one of the dissenting votes...
Oh, I saw that.
Was the $50 an hour extra if needed.
Right.
Is that meaning after hours?
Right. And I think that's...
Which really isn't a factor, is it?
No. I mean, I would be shocked if we would ever even call anybody after five. It just doesn't happen much.
Right.
Usually, they go down morning and noon for some reason. But he's also agreed to waive that if necessary, but I just don't see it even being... I don't remember a time where I saw someone walking around appearing on our computers at 5:30.
Right. And offhand, I mean, as a commissioner, when I see an open-ended contract such as that, it just kind of sends up a red flag to me. I have done some homework on this since then. I've talked to Brad and Kevin and Lauren at the IT department in Slayne County and they were very much in favor of heading the direction that you're heading. I want to, I guess, semi-apologize to Sherri for having... she did an admirable job, but she sold us just as no differently than you have.
Right.
And represented it the same as you have. But with the questions that were in my mind at that time, when I have a question, I'm going to cast a dissenting vote.
Sure.
And I can tell you that prior to the vote today, that I will vote to approve this because I felt like I got more knowledge about it in talking with our IT department, who I admire and have a great deal of confidence in. And they have a great deal of confidence in Studio F also.
Right.
So that's kind of my feelings personally. Other commissioners who wish to speak in this area?
Well, I was the other dissenting vote.
Yes, I'm well aware of that also.
Of course, you know, I know, you've already hit me up about it, it's okay.
I didn't hit them.
Right here, I still got the mark. No. But after I spent some time with the IT department and really it was like, I had some questions that I felt like I wanted answered and that's the reason why I voted no. And the same situation, I got my questions answered and some other things and you just answered another one just a little bit ago of another question I had, but anyway. And I'm, yeah, I've changed my mind and I'm ready to vote and approve what you've... you've approved here or are asking for. Yes.
Well, I appreciate you doing some homework and talking because we also talked to Brad and I know Kevin would speak up if he needed to, but it has nothing to do with those guys or their work.
No.
It's top-notch, but...
And that was one of the biggest reasons.
It was just a quicker response than I think, I think I'd be expecting them to do more than they're able to. And you know me, then I get angry. And then there's problems for everybody.
Yeah, I do know you. And I do understand what you just said. But anyway, and one of their other things that they said is because I'd gotten an email, received an email from Brad and to that effect, but in the, in the timeframes that they had hired another, so they do have the four people now.
Oh, yeah, four, they do, yeah.
And so, and so like he felt a little more comfortable handling it and, but he would like to see this as just a one-year contract and kind of do that and say, okay, where are we at after a year? Because he, he knows that he will be able to work with this gentleman or this company a lot better and learn a lot more.
Right. And I think when Mike Montoya and I looked at it, it's a 30-day out. So should we decide at the end of a 12-month period, decide to see if the county wants to pick it up, we aren't opposed to that either. I just want to make sure that all, everything's in line so that, my big thing, we can't go down and be down a long time.
You bet. Anyway, thank you for your patience.
All right. Is there any public comment regarding this RFA? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for further comments and possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we sign the IT service agreement with Studio F, Inc. as requested by staff.
Second to motion.
Further comments? It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 182-18, Community Corrections General IT Contract with Studio F. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number six.
RFA 184-18, Justice Assistant Grant Application with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
You're the star of the show today.
Thank you very much. It's grant season. This is a grant that we've received many years in a row and then last year wrote it and the funds were never released. The federal government, for some reason, held on to this grant dollars, I don't know why. And that's funny because, well, they're enjoying it too, but it's funny because now the grant, the federal grant we wrote last year is being held out. I just, I don't understand the system, but I just move with it and whatever. So now these dollars are available and it is a justice assistance grant and is solely for salary and benefits for one drug court officer. So we're just seeking permission to submit this JAG grant to the Kansas Governor's Office to be approved for the salary and benefits to be paid for one drug court officer. Yeah, there's nothing, there's no administrative costs, there's no, there's nothing in here but salary and benefits. You'll see, we track a lot of information for them, but there's just nothing in there that, outside of those two things. We don't charge an administrative fee, we don't take anything out of it for costs that Sherry spends months putting data in. We just want it for the salary and the benefits.
I'll repeat my further comment. I'm okay with accepting money from the...
Yes.
The feds and the state.
Yes.
To run our program, so.
Absolutely.
Very well done.
Thanks.
Further questions of Annie from anyone? Public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action. Further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move we submit the FY 19 JAG Grant Application in the amount of $66,205 as requested.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 184-18, Justice Assistant Grant Application for the GAG Grant in the amount of $66,205. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You won again.
Thank, thank you. It feels good to walk out of here as a winner.
All right. And thank you again too, Sherry and Mrs. Lancaster, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seven.
RFA 186-18, Sling County Codes with Andrew Manley, Assistant County Administrator, Director of Finance.
Morning Andrew.
Morning Commissioners. Sling County Administration is requesting permission to publish the Sling County Codebook on our county website and cancel the contract with MuniCode, an agency that currently publishes our codebook. MuniCode has been publishing our codebook since 1992. While effective, it is not widely used by counties and costs between $1,500 and $3,000 a year. Canceling this contract will enable the county to redirect these tax dollars. In addition to a cost savings, the county will be able to publish a codebook customized to our needs and in a timely manner. MuniCode currently publishes a universal layout catered more to cities. In regards to timeliness, the county, the county's current contract does not allow for immediate codification. Publishing the codebook ourselves will correct both of these deficiencies. All codified resolutions will be reviewed by legal prior to being published. The additional time on existing staff is expected to be minimal and negligible. So alternatives for action is accept the staff recommendation, publish the codebook in-house and cancel MuniCode. Option B, continue with MuniCode or three other options. Staff recommends publishing the county, the Sling County Codebook on our county website and canceling MuniCode contract. Budget impact, there is no budget impact and county administrator has approved for recommendation.
All right. Once again, I feel a need to say I'm sorry to you for wasting your time. I'm wasting everybody's time today because I put this off last week, not totally feeling that I understood it, which I do now after going back and watching the tape, listening to you again, talking to you in person, which I will say that you've done an excellent job on this. And it is a cost-saving measure, not a cost that's going to apply to the county. It's a cost-saving measure all the way around. And like you said, the, the codebook is rarely used by the public, as I understand it. So I apologize for the delay and I'm for it now and I will let other commissioners comment or... Okay? Any, any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we cancel the contract with MuniCode and publish the Sling County Codebook on our county website.
Second.
Further comments? It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 186-18, the Sling County Codes and cancel our contract with MuniCode, publish our own codebook on the county website. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. That concludes today's agenda. I will say that I did attend the Airport Authority meeting last week. I also had the opportunity to address Ambuck's weekly meeting last week and bring them an update on the county, which was appreciative on their part and we had some good discussions